I have a motion.
Yes, councillor, what's your motion?
That we go to the normal agenda that we skipped through last night, starting with, I think it is Corp 05.
Yep, um, the, so technically, we are in the middle of an item, so what we will, the procedural way to do it, if I move that way, then, so whilst there was a motion by councillor McNamara to go into closed session, so that's being debated, there was no decision being made on that, so during that item, we can actually, you can't move it, but I can move that, so what I'll do is I'll move that motion, so we'll continue with the agenda as originally written, in that fashion be continued, which means Corp 05 will be the start and then we'll continue to operations committees and the confidential items from one to twelve, so.
I have a motion in relation to Corp 05 as well.
Just one second, so I'll move that way, whether it's by form of a may or a minute or however fish you want to do it, but I'll move that way, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, okay, I declare that carried, so that is now moved, so councillors and everyone watching, we now will go to Corp 05, the full year twenty five, twenty six quarter one budget review, which is in book seven, page three, tab number three. Councillor Sevsky, you said you had a motion.
Yeah, just gonna put it on the screen.
Yep, do you have a second or three of your motion?
I'll maybe second that motion.
Yep. So I'm just going through that, so councillor, could you just let us know which ones are done, the microphone please.
Thanks, through the mayor, number one's done, that number two's done, number four's done, number five's already done and happy to do number three.
On that, if he's already done, then.
So what are we talking about, what's done?
Okay, thank you for the question councillor, so in relation to the Q1 budget review, it's not unexpected deterioration from a projected at 0.8. We, our last council meeting, I spoke to about 10 to 12, it's now 5.6. 7.5 was the Voyager Point decision, which was an expected court outcome, which is actually very, very, very beneficial to council in relation to our long-term financial plan, but the 5.6 is absorbed in the 7.5 projected. So at the moment, given those circumstances, we're out of our control, but actually are favourable to council. A very, very good financial position would have been 0.8 up to 2 million surplus without that Voyager Point decision, so not unexpected, in fact forecast. In fact, on the risk register for anybody that attended the governance meetings and wanted to understand variations in budget forecast to realisation, there were some easy lessons there. In relation to the CT Lewis property sale, full cost benefit analysis has been conducted. Understand that we only gave that to councillors very recently, Mr Mayor, and if that's a matter for deferral until the next meeting, we can make sure that CBA has been done. Do you want me to finish or?
Please continue.
A public report identifying all non-essential, non-essential to who councillor? Give me a resolution in what you think is not essential, and I'll make sure that number three is done. In relation to the 90-day action plan to restore financial stability, there is no instability, the forecasts are good. We pulled back again 12 to 14, back to five, with the excuse, sorry, with the assumptions validated in point one. And we're on track, we are doing, we have got some very positive news as late as this week, without talking about any commercial incompetence decisions, which has pulled back some money and some other forecasted savings, which we will tell council as we do in our updated financial reports. In relation to monthly updates and budget repair progress, there's no budget repair required, the budget is tracking quite well. And again, until its operating positions return to a neutral or surplus trajectory, we expect that to be our progress and our expectations for this financial year, thank you.
So councillor Hart?
I have a foreshadowed motion.
What's your foreshadowed motion? Sorry, microphone, please.
The recommendation is per the book, besides point four, to change it to defer the consideration of the sale of CT Lewis to a governance committee meeting.
Do you have a second there?
I did, yep, sorry, I just want to ask, so if we're deferring consideration to a governance meeting.
So I counsel your question is to?
Sorry, through the mayor, to the CEO, or either of you actually. If we're deferring the consideration to a governance committee, that would mean it's coming back to council because it won't be resolved in the governance committee, is that correct? Because if that's the case, I'd.
Yes.
If that's the case, if the mover's happy, I'd be happy to defer consideration of the sale of CT Lewis to the next ordinary council meeting, and I'm happy to speak to why when we have the opportunity.
So, are you saying defer the council? So as in, do you not discuss it at a governance meeting?
We can discuss it if you like, we can take it to the governance to discuss, but I want it tabled again at the next council meeting.
Councillor Hart? The, did you still want it to go, because I guess you could add governance and ordinary council meeting, which would happen anyway, but just to clarify, but I think you're saying rather than be encapsulated in the minutes of the governance meeting, you still want it as a separate agenda item?
As long as, I'm happy to leave it at governance, if that governance committee report will come to the next ordinary council meeting. I'm just thinking it's a very short turnaround in time, that's all.
How about, so my understanding is we have received basically a report relating to CT Lewis, and that will come to us.
Who's your comment or question to?
I'm trying to workshop point four of the motion.
Through councillor McNamara?
Well, I'm the mover.
Okay, yes.
We have received basically what is a report that was going to be presented to us at the next council meeting. So what about a change point four to something along the lines of that a cost benefit analysis is presented at the next governance committee meeting relating to the sale of CT Lewis? And then we'll receive that report that council's received on Monday at the next ordinary council meeting.
So, yeah, I'll get to it one moment councillor, so we've got, so what was that? Yes councillor, and we're still trying to.
To other councillors, but I have, I've been patient.
Thank you councillor, so councillor McNamara, are you happy to second that? And that encapsulates councillor Hart? Is the mover, are you happy with that? Microphone, please.
Yes.
Councillor Khanib?
Yes, if the mover, councillor Rostevsky, is amenable, if we could just scroll up to the motion, I'd seek to amend to.
Yep, so just, so let's just on that, taking consider of what the CEO has said, so.
I know what he said about the other stuff, I'll get to that, for example, five, I don't think five is necessary. I think five is included in a report that we get back to council monthly, that was the answer. So if the mover is content with that aspect of it, because that comes through, I'm content with removing five, if the mover is. Yep, so five can go.
Sorry.
Two. Councillor resolves not to sell CT Lewis.
Yes, sorry councillor Sevsky? Yes, so.
I would just not to sell it at all.
Full stop.
Full stop.
Have you finished councillor, maybe you're still going?
I'm still going, if that's okay, yeah. In terms of three, I think the CEO raised, sorry, this is to the CEO, through the chair to the CEO. The CEO raised that three needs clarification, because what is non-essential, which is a fair enough point. But I think in lieu of the consideration, of course, if that was the motion that was to be resolved by council, directs the CEO to prepare a report identifying. Perhaps rather than non-essential. Yes, thank you councillor, inefficiencies? Any efficiencies? Efficiencies. Two discretionary spending before, and then it can end there, at spending? Before, after spending? Before a determination is made to sell an asset.
CEO's, yep.
Sorry, through the mayor councillor, does that include human resources? Only to the point, just for clarification, because efficiencies include staffing, right? So if you're asking me to put, say, 10% headcount out, that's an efficiency.
No, I'm not doing that.
I guess, is I, on that, I see what you're thinking, so if there's a non-core function that council is doing, or I think essential has been moved, but there are people doing, employees doing that, and you stop that thing, then I guess is that what you're referring to with regards to then, therefore effectively a reduction in operation cost and the headcount?
Yeah, sorry, so the challenge of the motion is simply.
We're not doing anything though, it's asking for a report, the only thing that's an action point in there, the only action point in there is to not to sell CT Lewis, that's the only current action point. The other action point is to prepare a report about efficiencies, of course, I'm certainly not suggesting human resource efficiencies, but whatever efficiencies that you would determine appropriate as the CEO, to come back to this council that would offset the need to sell an asset. That's the intent of it, how you structure that in the form of a report that comes back to council is a matter for you. But, and as I understand it, one, point one as outlined in the mover's recommendation councillor Rostevsky, is essentially noting what's in the foreshadowed motion in terms of the approved budget variations. It's an accurate reflection of the numbers, so it's neither here or there, whether it's point one in councillor Rostevsky's motion or point one in the foreshadowed motion. The only difference between the two motions, as I understand it, is to defer the sale of CT Lewis for a cost benefit analysis or not to sell CT Lewis. But I'm content with the way it is, if the mover is.
So my challenge still with the motion is, is what was unexpected, it was forecast, it was council budget, and we told you about a risk three times in relation to the Voyager Point issue. That's your variation, we only heard evidence today about the immaturity around understanding budget variations. It wasn't unexpected, so the word unexpected is a little bit probably rough for staff.
Note that Q1 budget identifies a deterioration.
So, the.
A variance is fine.
A variance, a variance. So, now, we had a, we spent some time yesterday with regards to interpretation of motions, how, what is discussed, debated, resolved, and then what is applied happened. So can you provide any more, maybe guidance in your mind, the definition in point three of discretionary? Maybe like a bracket such as?
The motion is clear as it is in black and white, I don't think it needs any further clarification. If clarification is required, council staff can make a determination as they have with other matters, I don't see why it needs to be clarified any further.
Sorry, councillor, I understand that, but whose discretion? I've got a budget, an approved budget.
Can I just say something?
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna answer the question.
I just want to say, in respect to the CEO, we get criticised sometimes, we're saying, no, that's operational. Are we now asked to delve into operational issues? This is where there's a bit of uncertainty. I'm happy to sit down if I get the numbers and go through it, I don't have the numbers here in front of me, but maybe we can do a workshop, all of us together in the next week or two, and see if we can identify any discretionary spending. That's probably the best way to deal with it, rather than debate it now, because, you know, we don't have the numbers in front of us. Are we walking into operational areas? Just a suggestion.
So I think councillor, there's a few ways of looking at it, I guess.
Well, let me, let me start from this point, and I think that what the CEO was going about regarding point one. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the original agreement, or the original proposed agreement between Liverpool City Council and Bangstown Council, was it around, was it $4 million by the previous director?
Circa, again, these were commercial terms negotiated on the anticipation that we would own Voyager Point, Voyager Point Bridge for 80 years of maintenance, yep.
So just so councils are clear, that staff had negotiated that we would own that asset, so therefore becomes 100% our liability, and the proposal was a $4 million, approximately circa $4 million fee from Canterbury-Bangstown.
Originally.
Yes, then there was a, discussions happened and negotiations happened with Bangstown Council saying, well, that was around, I think, 2022, 23, 23? Where, I'm not saying we renegotiated, Bangstown was not happy, then Liverpool City Council commenced proceedings against Bangstown City Council, Canterbury-Bangstown Council.
There were proceedings on foot, yes?
Yes, but initiated by Liverpool.
Yes.
So, and then it was projected from the advice that we had at the time, when we prepared the 24, 25 budget, that council would receive around.
Well, we, obviously we didn't know what the, we had a number in our mind, a range of numbers. And we made an assumption in the budget, I think it was circa seven point, it was five, circa five. We thought that was a very, oh, well, I, sorry, I thought that was a conservative budget, sorry, conservative forecast, and I actually expected some more than that, but that's what we come up with.
And that was finalised in July, when the court proceedings?
Around about July, yes, but with a joint ownership model in perpetuity, and therefore the potential, if it was five, the potential $5 million immediate advantage was lost. But the 80-year gain would be well in excess of that.
So I'm getting to that, so i.e. had we had received that $5 million in a lump sum payment, that one would mean we would pretty much be within the projected budget, roughly, within, say, a million dollars.
With other things that I'm aware of at the moment, we'd be dealt, we'd be.
Just that one item, just that $5 million.
Yes, we'd be, we'd be right on, right on budget.
Okay, so that one item, the alternate, which was agreed upon by Canterbury-Bangstown and Liverpool Council, was rather than have a one-off payment upfront, there is now an 80-year agreement or a lifetime agreement?
It's an ongoing maintenance agreement, we're still working through how that would work, but we share the ownership and the ongoing maintenance of the bridge.
So effectively, whilst we may not have had the $5 million now, we now have an opportunity, well, now we will be saving significant money for future councils, because now it is shared evenly.
Consider we more, three, four, five times more.
Okay, wonderful, so three, four, five times, so potentially rather than $5 million now, it's anywhere from 15 to 20 plus million dollars for that. So when we talk about, to be, so I guess, so if everyone is clear, that's one item that has led to that. However, instead of getting that money now, we're now covered future councils, intergenerational, I think under section, which is we should be looking at under section eight of the Act, their potential liabilities on what was a major issue.
Correct.
All right, thank you, okay, councillor Hart?
Yes, I have an issue with item three. Before determinations made to sell an asset, to sell the asset, what assets are we talking about? Any asset? Are we talking about property assets, building assets? That needs further clarification, in my view.
Sorry, acting deputy mayor, who's your question to?
To, sorry, to the CEO, I imagine, through you to the CEO.
So through the mayor, my assumption based on the forward and secondary, it relates, three relates to two. So that's the way I understood it. Again, my challenge here is the word discretionary, whose discretion?
I'm content with ending the sentence at spending, if the mover is. Because two's been resolved in an actionable way.
Are you happy with that councillor Rostevsky? Yes? Okay, all right.
Let's have a question through the mayor, the CEO.
Yes.
Questions maybe, the recommendation calls for council to approve budget variations found in the quarterly budget review statement, and the first motion moved by councillor Rostevsky doesn't include any reference to that. Does that mean in effect that we're not endorsing any of the recommendations that have been put to council?
To the CEO?
Thank you, through the chair, I'll just refer that to the CFO. Thank you. Through the chair, I'll just refer that to the C F I.
Through the C E O, um, the budget recommendations that have been put forward is to help council achieve the original budget target of point eight, um, uh, point eight million dollars. And I guess it's, um, if the council is looking at alternative means to uh, fill that gap, if you like, um, it's, it's the, the core. And, um, and, and just, just advising that this is a new office of local government requirement where I have to lodge this review statement together with the council resolution to the office of local government post this meeting. So council can decide either way, but that goes to office of local government.
So through the mayor, the C E O, point two, the recommendation two is to continue to review discretionary expenditure and rationalise costs. Isn't that point three in this motion? One million dollars.
Through the mayor, councillor Hart, what's the meaning of the word discretionary?
That's not for me to determine. I'm just saying it's already in the report, so I don't know why we're, as, if. I think the answer to point three is one million dollars according to this report that's been put in front of us. And does that mean we're not accepting point one, point two, point three, or point four of, or, sorry, the four recommendations?
No, well, yes, I think we need to approve the budget variations. So, so I think point one, um, uh, is relevant. So I think anyway, I think councillors understand how it, um, how it works. Uh, we have two motions that have been, let's just call it workshopped between everyone, but the reality is we still have the, uh, the motion as moved by councillor Rostewski, second by councillor Carnaby, and we have a foreshadowed motion. Moved by councillor Hart, seconding councillor McNaught on, on that. Um. Councillor Carnaby?
Um, councillor Rostewski earlier indicated that, um, he offered a good suggestion, a workshop, um, where we workshop not necessarily just C T Lewis, but, um, other aspects that could be considered, whether it's efficiencies, discussions, what have you. Um, I don't think that that's a bad idea, um, and including that as, as perhaps a fall, um, that councillors attend a workshop. And, look, we can, we can specify a whole range of things in here. Or we can keep it general. The reason I say that is because we've had discussions before about the asset in point two, where, as I understand it, there was a site visit, right? So there was also meant to be certain recommendations that come back with what can be done with it, which hasn't really occurred, nor in, in, in the sense of it's come back and we've said X. We can do all of these things as opposed to this particular motion says, let's sell, let's sell the asset. So I, I think that if councillors attend to work, agree for the point, for the, for the time being, not to sell the asset, direct the C E O to prepare a, a report identifying efficiencies, discretionary spending, councillors attend a workshop to discuss improvements of property identified in point two.
Have you finished councillor, um, Carnaby? Oh, it goes, yep.
Can I ask a question through the mayor and the C E O?
Just one sec, the C E O wants to, wants to make comment.
Fo- following the resolution on C T Lewis, council officers undertook, as they're required by law, every part of that resolution. In relation to a workshop in rela- in relation to C T Lewis, uh, council was supplied with a comprehensive dossier, timeline, uh, cost benefit analysis, uh, et al, uh, in relation to C T Lewis. Now, I've conceded that perhaps that's too premature for, for consumption uh, prior to tonight's decision, important decision in relation to a failing asset. Um, and, and that's why, you know, certainly from the staff perspective, happy to have that heard at the next meeting. But we've workshopped this to death. We've undertaken everything council have asked us to do in relation to this particular asset.
And, and if I can just, before we get to your questions, councillor A J in Hart, uh, Hart, the, this workshop now, this workshop. Okay, so you just wanna restrict this workshop to the actual property? No? Yep, sorry.
If we look at the report, the report actually suggests four properties, I believe. C T Lewis, uh, three others as part of the project twenty-six. It's my view that we should consider not just the C T Lewis Centre. Look at the other three as well. We haven't looked at the other three. It's just in the report. And, and to be fair, we've had three days of a conference and not really enough time, in my view, to read through that and digest that. So I would like, personally, I would like to see not just the C T Lewis Centre discussed, but those other three as well. One is, for want of a better word, I think is a geriatric centre. There, there were two others, I don't know what they were, but they were properties that were doubtful too. There was, they, they cost us, they're not, uh, productive. And I think we should be looking at those as well at the same time we look at the C T Lewis Centre. And if we decide, from my point of view, the C T Lewis Centre, in previous terms of council, we looked at that and we were going to go with a, uh, a housing organisation. And we were looking at putting at affordable housing on that. And that was some joint venture between council and the housing organisation. Now, we haven't discussed that at this, in this term of council. There, there are things that I think councillors should be aware of, and they're not. So at the moment, all we've, we've looked at the pros and cons of selling the C T Lewis Centre. And I can understand, we've now spent a lot of money on Phillips Park and C T Lewis Centre really a surplus to our needs simply because of Phillips Park. We didn't have Phillips Park to that extent before. So it's something that needs to discuss. There have been variations that have occurred since then. My point of view, councillors, if you need to modify to do that, I think that's probably a better option.
I'm content with the deputy mayor's amendments he's raised, and I thank the staff for factoring that into point four. I'm content with that if the mover is.
Uh, one thing.
Sorry, councillor Rostewski, there was councillor A J, then councillor Hart. But, uh, what can I just say before, as the mover of the motion, are you content with that?
Yes, but I wanted to, um, make a point, one, as councillor Hart mentioned, approve the budget recommendations, one, two, and four only. And I suggest that councillor Hart look at his motion because you're approving the sale of the centre, if you're approving the budget variations.
While he's looking at that, councillor A J?
Hang on, I, can I get my right of reply to that? It says review council's property portfolio, doesn't say sell.
Can we just have clarification on that? Are we on the same page or different pages? No, councillor A J?
Yeah, um, to the chair, to the C E O. I, I believe that since we have been on council for a year, C T Lewis has come up, the C E O has, and the staff has given us report, open report. I quite remember, um, there was even suggesting about the housing, affordable housing, when we were in the governance meeting, and also collaborating with T A V. I don't think people read the reports. The, the report has been given to us all the time and we still come back and debate about this. So I would suggest, um, to the C E O, maybe book one day for all councillors, come and give us the reason why we should keep and why we should sell. Simple mathematics, simple equation, why do we keep this asset and why we should sell this asset? And the cost benefit and the loss. I think that will be the best way so we can move on. Thank you.
I have a question to the mayor through, uh, through the mayor to the C E O. Uh, does this, uh, quarterly budget review statement have to be sent to the O L G? And what date is that required to be sent to the O L G?
Thank you. Through the chair, over to the C F I, the answer's yes, I just don't know the date.
End of the second month, which is end of November.
Are we going to have a workshop by the end of November to outline budget, um, initiatives to improve, to mitigate the unsatisfactory result? That's a question for councillors. Are we gonna really have that in the next couple of days?
But doesn't, doesn't the motion approve some remedial work which would then be provided to the office of local government? And then in future, a workshop to discuss those improvements with a subsequent variation which is then sent off to the office of local government? Um, my question is to the C E O, is that statement I've just made correct?
Councillor, can you say it again?
The, um, motion before the floor approves some remedial action being recommendations one, two, and four. Um, if that motion, as it's drafted, is passed, um, the report can still be provided to the office of local government. And then subsequently, a workshop can be held to discuss improvements with a potential future variation which would also be sent off to the office of local government. Thank you.
Yeah, yes, the answer's yes.
All right. So councillors, the, uh, the issue here, uh, other than the number one, the statute requirement to, uh, look at the quarterly budget review exists. The second factor here is the management of assets for current and future generations as our responsibility under the Act. Now, uh, this is one, C T Lewis is probably one of two hundred plus buildings that council, uh, currently owns. Um, and this one generally, as the reports have stated, is its dilapidated state, the new asset that we built right next to it, rather than dealing with that dilapidated building. It was more efficient to build a new building, and the people learning are very happy with that, put that aside. The, um, what I'm getting at is a discussion of our property portfolio, which probably, if you were to include these two hundred, uh, buildings, uh, with our commercial C B D access, will be in excess of one billion actually, so I think it's a, let's call it one billion dollars. Uh, we will, uh, probably find it challenging that maybe this is not the right form to go through these discussions because we have seen that it's gone over and over numerous times, as councillor A J, um, has, has pointed out. Uh, only, I think it was, uh, ye- yesterday, I was reminded of the, um, council in previous terms had a master planning, uh, steering, uh, committee, uh, that effectively, I think, looked at some of our, that looked at our property assets and how to deal with them. Um, and can I just recommend to councillors to maybe have a think about that because in a committee scenario where you are looking at this massive part of your prop, of your, um, portfolio, your assets, your assets and associated liabilities with them, that maybe councillors may want to consider re-establishing something like that, so, um, people can get into it and we don't go, I guess, around in circles, because if we, if it's taken us so far, I think we're over twelve months on this building, on this one particular item. Yeah, we'd probably be, yeah, we have another two hundred to go in, only a few years, hopefully, less than a few years, I think now. So that's something I think I'd like to point out. So councillors, um, we've had enough discussion about this. Um, uh, I think we'll now offer councillors their right of replies, uh.
I'd like to, uh, so we're considering the substantive motion before us. I'd like to speak against that motion.
Uh, yes, councillor.
Um, so I've listened to the debate intently and, um, thank you everybody for that. Um, my, my main, uh, reason for, for the foreshadowed motion, supporting the foreshadowed motion is that it is, it is fair that we did only receive those reports late and, um, I'd like time to consider them. I think that the place to be able to consider that would be the next governance committee meeting, which is coming up uh, next week or the week after. Um, and I, I hear what the deputy mayor was saying, um, about the, the number of properties, but this is part of the problem with getting these reports late is that those properties referred to are actually on the same parcel of land. So I think that nobody's right across this report right now because it came quite late. Um, so, you know, and I thank the staff for the work they've done on, on identifying the, the savings in the original recommendation. So, um, I think in respect of that and the fact that we have had many sessions on, on the budget and particularly on the property portfolio, apart from the fact that we did receive these reports late, I, I'm speaking against the motion and, and in essence, um, you know, leaning towards my foreshadowed motion that I supported because we have heard that we have had these, these are answered in the reports that we have, uh, the questions. Um, so we can move forward, uh, with the exception of further consideration of the reports that were received late.
Cool. Thank you. So speaker against? Any other speakers for or against? Would you like a right of reply, councillor?
Yes, um, one thing that sort of makes me uncomfortable is we're always looking to sell assets to, to plug a deficit, which I just, it just doesn't reconcile with me. Um, in terms of looking at other ways of doing it, that's why I suggested we do a, a sit down, get the spreadsheet out and look for ways like we did with the budget. Um, we may have to cut spending in certain areas. I can identify them when I look at the budget and we can all workshop it. Um, doing it tonight is, it's impossible. We don't have those numbers in front of us. And that's why I've suggested that, um, we don't sell the C T Lewis because it's very easy to sell an asset, but no one operates their own family budget that way. If you, if you, if you've gotta pay your credit card debt, you're not gonna sell your investment property, look at ways to cut your spending. And that's what we need to look at a lot more closely before even contemplate selling a single asset that we all know doubles in value every ten years. You sell it today for X, it'll be worth two X in ten years. That's why I support my motion.
Uh, thank you. Sorry, that was his right of reply. We'll now, uh, deal with the, um, um, uh, the motion as moved by councillor Rostewski, uh, seconded by councillor Carnaby. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? I declare the motion, uh, lost. We'll now deal with the foreshadowed motion.
Division.
Division. All those in favour, please stand. Those against? Thank you. So we'll now move to the foreshadowed motion. Uh, does anyone feel I need to debate it? Are we moving that point four or the?
Um, just before we move on, in relation to that division, can it be recorded that if it was lost, therefore that you must have cut, used your casting vote?
Yes.
If that could be made clear in the minutes.
Yes. Would you like to refer the section of the Act in that as well, or are you just happy with noting that?
Code of Meeting Practice?
No, the section of the Law Government Act that covers.
No, I'd like it recorded in the minutes.
Hmm. Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm saying, would you like also the section of the Law Government Act that covers that part?
Yeah, go for it.
No, I'm just asking you councillor, what your preference is.
No, I said my preference was that you noted that the casting vote was exercised. If you'd like to add the particular provisions of the Act or the Code of Meeting Practice, I'm happy to do so.
Just clarify, I wanna make sure that you are satisfied with the, what's written.
Yeah, that's exactly what I asked for. If, if you do wanna add anything else, I'm happy to.
But the next. But the next, so yes, so the foreshadowed motion as moved by councillor Hart, sorry, and second by councillor McNaul. Is there any discussion? Microphone please.
Could I, uh, could I ask uh for a change, amendment to that?
Yeah, you, you, is anything you want to speak for your motion, anything councillor Hart?
I just want to uh make an adjustment. It should say point four, receive a cost benefit analysis related to the sale of C T Lewis at the next government, sorry, governance committee meeting. And then defer the consideration of the sale of C T Lewis to the next ordinary council meeting. And I'm happy to entertain any amendments.
Is the secondor happy with that?
Yeah, if I can just point out the fact that, you know, if there is a cost benefit analysis that has been provided to us in these papers three days ago. I certainly don't want another one done, I just want that spoken about.
Yep, I think it has. So councillor Har- Harle?
I, I would just like to see, rather than limit it to the C T Lewis Centre, in the report, there were three other properties.
Hmm.
Could we include that in there as well?
Or refer to the CEO?
Yeah, thank, thank you councillor for the question. What you, what I think you do it as um, uh, described in this week's proceedings as well. Some of these uh properties uh, uh, have strong adjacencies. So there are four areas of land, but they're, they're adjacent to the C T Lewis Centre. And just, Mr Mayor, just indulge me for one second, when we talk about budget variance. The numbers are, are very sobering. We're at one percent of total budget. A five point six variance is one percent of the budget in variance. And less than two percent of operational expenditure. That's the facts on the numbers. And any issue around WISIG funded projects? Which are grant funded projects, irrespective of their scoping or their de-scoping, do not affect the budget. The budget for Khan's Hill is bang on, it's just we're getting half the pool via a de-scoping process. But it does not affect our budget position.
So councillor Hart, I, Harle, sorry, um. Are you happy with that?
Yes, I am, I, I think that, yeah, I'm happy with that.
Mover and secondor happy with that?
It's got one edit.
Yeah.
I think it should say, uh, receive a cost point four, receive a cost benefit analysis related to the contemplated sale. Because we're not selling them, it's under consideration.
Yep, great. Councillor Kineb?
That's alright, that's alright, um. Two things, uh, in speaking against the motion, I, 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 I want to highlight a, a particular point. The, the, the motion uh was lost on, on the mayor's casting vote. The proposition is that the, we defer the consideration of the sale of C T Lewis to the next ordinary council meeting, which will be the twelfth of December. Um, councillor Dr Betty Green's been approved to leave until that date. I would think it would be inappropriate when the sale of an asset, a crucial asset, is sold and passed on a casting vote. When the consideration can go back into January in circumstances where we may have a full fleet of councillors. I think it would be inappropriate, and the perception is that we're rushing to sell something that's been discussed for a period of twelve months. I don't think it would be in appro- I don't think it would be appropriate to push this through in December. In circumstances where we can consider it in either January or February. We've rated twelve months already, um, I'm clearly against the, the sale of C T Lewis, but I think everyone has their right to, to vote. And I would, I would think that the mover and secondor of the foreshadowed motion would and should be amenable. To a consideration in there, that it be pushed until January or February. To allow or envisage councillor Betty Green being available, if that's the case, so she can have her vote and have her say. Are the mover and secondor of this motion amenable to that cause?
No.
Any other speakers for or against?
So, I haven't finished, but I'll just wanted to ask, so councillor McNaul, you're against that posi- that position? To con- to, to delay it to January, so councillor Betty Green can consider this position?
Well, the move is against it, so it doesn't matter what I, what I think. Um, but for the record, um, we're talking in, in um theories and things like that, any one of us could be away at any time. So I don't think that it's prudent to continue to delay things in case somebody is here or not.
That's correct, but we know that at the moment.
No, it's my answer, no.
No, your answer is no. Okay, in, in speaking against the motion, it's been, um, i- i- it's clear that there is an urgency to sell this asset. Um, this asset, since on my time on council, has the only asset that we've been taken on a walkthrough. Uh, or, or consideration of a walkthrough. I don't know why there's a, there, there is a rush to sell this asset, I don't know why there is a rush to sell it in December. I don't know why, that the moment that there is a deficit, the first thing that comes up is an asset. That's been considered before this council at least three or four times in the time that I've been elected in September of twenty twenty four. It raises question marks and the full body of council is not here. And the consideration of a se- of selling of a, of a few million dollar asset. And to disregard a fellow councillor, I think is abysmal in this place, when there's an opportunity to delay it by one month.
So that person can have this. I, I, like the, the, uh, calling, calling the conduct.
Sorry, councillor Kineb, there's a point of order.
I'm sorry, that, that's your opinion.
Sorry, councillor Hart, what's your point of order please?
The, calling uh, uh, my decision to uh not defer this further, eh, abysmal, I don't accept that. The, the imputation of my conduct, I think is, i- i- it brings me into disrepute.
Uh, thank you, uh, councillor Hart, um, I understand your point. Councillor Kineb, um, would you uh mind withdrawing the word abysmal from your statement?
I won't, but I, I do thank councillor Hart for raising a point of order.
Okay, well, sorry councillor, councillor Kineb.
Yes.
Councillor Kineb, councillor Hart has moved a point, I agree with his point of order. I've asked you if you can uh please withdraw the uh, the negative, um, um. The negative uh, uh, words that you have put uh with regards to councillors, uh councillor Hart's motion.
My interpretation is that it's an abysmal decision, that's my interpretation, that's my opinion, your opinion may not be.
No, councillor, no, sorry, sorry, councillor. My opinion is I have to make it, I have to make a decision on the, what is contained with the code of meeting policy. Councillor Hart has made an objection and raised a point of order according to the procedures within the code of meeting practice. I have to make a determination of that, I've asked you.
I withdraw it, I withdraw it.
Thank you councillor Kineb.
But I want to raise a point of order and I'd like to see a bit of fairness here. Yesterday at the council meeting, councillor Hart referred to councillor Monahan twice, pointing to his ear, saying, Ordeka. Do we, do we, do you know what that refers to?
Uh, no councillor Kineb, and there was no point of order raised.
No, I'm raising, I'm raising it now, because you know what, because what it is, it's discrimination against people. It's discrimination against people who have hearing issues. So I ask you to uphold the point of order in this council meeting, where he made a discriminatory remark to a councillor. It's on the recording, you can hear it.
Oh, well.
You can hear it, are you going to uphold the point of order or no?
Uh, councillor Kineb, I'm not sure if you know how, uh, if the, if you can maybe reflect on the point of order. Um, doing it twenty hours or twenty-two hours after uh the said point, uh, uh, makes it challenging to make a, uh, ruling on.
I'm asking you to make a ruling, you can make a ruling either way.
No councillor, you, that, that, uh, they cannot be done twenty-two hours later. Um, there are provisions within uh, uh, the, uh, the Loggaman Act that allow you to deal with that.
So it's in, i- i- it's appropriate for him to say that, and you as the chair of this meeting allow it, and you're not going to sanction him for it, you're not going to suggest him that he shouldn't say it?
Number one, I didn't hear what he said.
He said Ordeka twice.
Yeah, number one, I didn't hear what he said.
Discriminatory against people who have hearing impairments, that's what it is.
Councillor Kineb.
It's a matter of fact.
Okay councillor, councillor Kineb, I've explained to you what you can do about the matter, we are debating this, can you please continue? You've got around three minutes left.
Uh, the timer's now working, is it?
It always has been working councillor.
It hasn't been displayed and you don't seem to remind any other councillor, it's only me that gets reminded about the timer.
Nobody has gone near it and you're probably actually, you're actually over it.
Well, then if I'm over it, then tell me it's on and don't use my time to speak.
Sorry.
Because you've taken half of it.
No, I've actually deducted that, I'm saying you've got three minutes left.
I haven't seen it on the screen, where is it?
If you're happy, we can set up a timer for every single person here, if that's what you'd like.
We should.
Can we get ten timers, can we get ten, ten timers on the screen please? Alright, so in the process, do you have anything left to say in speaking against your motion, um, against the motion councillor Kineb?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to continue?
I would, I just don't, I don't, I don't understand why you, why you're condescending to me, I don't, I don't, I don't understand it. Is there an issue when I speak, do you take issue with it, do you take umbrage with it? You seem to want to put up the timer, you, you always question me whether I continually to want to speak on a motion. It's as if it upsets you. If I can continue, the sale of this asset without a full body of councillors in a rush job fashion, in my, in my view. Is not appropriate, in my view, there's no need to rush it in December, there's only another fourteen to fifteen days. It can be considered in December, it can be considered at a council meeting in January. I'm speaking against the motion.
Thank you. Any other speakers for or against?
Yes.
For or against?
Against.
Yep.
I totally agree with councillor Kineb, we approved the motion last night to, to allow councillor Green leave. Until, I think, the end of this year, so it's highly inappropriate for her. Because I, we know that on the record, she's against that sale. Now, we've got, uh, you know councillor McNauld, who constantly refers to her as a friend. But why would a friend do that? Allow her not to vote on a very, very important matter? There is nothing wrong with putting it back to February, the CEO even mentioned that we're on track. Now, if we aren't on track, now I've got a feeling that something is about to come out, something of a disaster. If we don't sell this thing in the next month or so. We need transparency and honesty, because by the air in this room, something is going on and it's not right. So allow the councillor, Betty Green, to come back, I think it's in February, the first meeting that we have. Put it on a table, allow her to have her say, and I'm not one of her closest friends, but she should be at least given a right to vote. Because she's on the record against this, so now we've got councillors who refer to her as a friend, working against her. That's why I want that on the record, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moon?
Speaking for the motion, I want to thank the staff and the CEO for bringing this to us. I know how much of the work that's been done to get this to this stage. I've actually had a site inspection myself and I've seen the property, how deteriorated it is, and how costly it will be to bring it up to scratch. That money could be used very, very well elsewhere, where we can have a polished up property for our residents, for rate payers. Instead of having a deteriorated property that we can't use or have any type of community use for it. So I want to thank the staff, thank the CEO, and I believe this is a great thing for our community, thank you.
Councillor McNaul?
Mr Mayor, I put that the motion be put.
Yep, we've had two speakers for and two speakers against, there's been a motion, there's been a motion, the motion be put. Councillor Hart, would you like your right of reply?
Yes, just very quickly, um, we're not selling the asset, we're deferring it for consideration. Because we received a number of documents just on Monday, which I'm sure not everyone has been able to rev- review. Um, and I, uh, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, and I'll put the motion, um, as moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor McNaul. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Those against, I declare carried.
Division.
All those in favour, please stand. Those against? Okay, declare the ca- motion carried. Uh, next item is operations zero two, feasibility study on vine covered car parks, page thirty-nine, recommendation page forty in book number seven.
Happy to move the recommendation.
Moved councillor Hart, you have a secondor. Second councillor Moon, is there any discussion?
I just want to thank council staff for the report, it was from my notice of motion a couple of months ago, so thanks for the quick turnaround.
Thank you.
It, um, sorry, I just had a question, um.
Who's your question to councillor?
How do I ask councillor, through the CEO to councillor Hart?
You'd go through me on that one.
Well, through the mayor, through councillor Hart. Um, when you moved your motion, did you look at the costing that this would cost ten thousand dollars per single parking space to install?
Uh, through the mayor councillor Stevsky, I asked for a report outlining these things. Um, so, no, I was not aware that it would cost ten thousand dollars and I'm grateful that the report outlined that.
Through the mayor to councillor Hart. When you raise a motion, you honestly do your own research before you put a report knowing the costing. It so, it seems like we've wasted a lot of time on this.
I'm not sure what the question is.
Yeah, second councillor, is there any further discussion? No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare carried. Next item, we had, uh, so we have two committee meetings, uh, I think councillor Stevsky indicated, was it committee four? You want to talk about that or have questions?
Yeah, let me just bring up my notes for one second.
So can, do we have someone who, who's going to move that? Moved councillor Harle, seconded, councillor AJ. Uh, yes councillor Sevsky?
There was a um question there regarding Coopers Paddock.
So your question is to?
To the CEO.
Yes.
Um, I think deputy mayor, oh, at the time deputy mayor Peter Harle raised that when the property was sold. It was supposed to go into Warwick Farm and the um, the jockey club haven't done that now, I wasn't on council on that. But wasn't there a contract to bind them to, to do that? Um, we can't allow something like that to occur, if there was, if there wasn't a contract, why wasn't there? You can't give him that discretion, if I can get some further information on that.
Yes, thank you, uh, through the mayor, I can help you with that. So Coopers Paddock uh augmentation was a V P A, part of a voluntary planning. Um, a- authority in relation to an extension of uh the bike track. So that's still under negotiations, my director, planning and design, met with A T C only. Forty-eight, seventy-two hours ago on the same matter. This is one of a number of V P As that have, have been taken way too long uh to resolve. Um, the mo- the most obvious one uh is we finally got a park for Edmondson Park. So it was a twelve-year-old V P A until we uh pulled that one back into line only this year. So we're in final um kind of negotiations about how, what's, what's the best result for rate payers in relation to that V P A undertaking. And we should have some advice, I'd suggest, uh, for the February council meeting on that.
Any other further discussion? No, I'll put the uh motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. Uh, next item is committee.
Before we go on to the next item, I have an urgency motion.
Uh, yes councillor, what is your urgency motion?
Uh, one, notes the remarks made by councillor Hart towards myself at this meeting. Those comments being Ordeka, Ordeka, and a gesture to his ear. Notes that a point of order was taken by councillor Kineb at this meeting in relation to those comments that was refused. Three, notes that the comments Ordeka, Ordeka are discriminatory towards the hearing impaired and is highly offensive. Four, request a formal apology from councillor Hart to Ordeka Australia.
And what is the basis of your urgency?
Uh, it occurred at this meeting, a point of order was taken uh on my behalf by councillor Kineb. Uh, in relation to those comments. Um, it was suggested that it couldn't be taken um twenty-four hours or twenty-two hours later. Um, I would note that most of that time was spent up, uh, spent um either uh going home, sleeping. Or otherwise attending employment during the day, uh, but it's still at the same uh council meeting. It's perfectly valid point of order. I actually didn't um hear it or um notice it at the time, but it was uh played to me today. Um, and having seen it and heard it, I agree. It's offensive, it's discriminatory. Um, on that basis, I say that it is urgent.
Sorry, I have to declare an interest in this, um, non pecuniary significant as the motion relates to me. And I'll be leaving the chambers.
Well, the only way that I can, because I did not hear this and nor was it raised at the time. And as you've, you noted councillor Monahan, uh, uh, you did not hear it as well. So the only way to deal with this is to go back to the recording and play it. So I cannot make a ruling on something that happened, uh, with regards to that, as was identified, people did not hear it. So ultimately, what you're saying is we need to stop the meeting now, conduct an investigation into what was said.
Is the motion going to be ruled as urgent or not?
Going through that at this point in time, alright? Because that's ultimately what you're asking for. Is that, is this, because on that basis, I do not deem it urgent.
Okay.
If that's what you're doing, if that's what you want.
If, if you're not deeming it urgent, just make the ruling so we can move on.
I'm just trying to understand what you are trying to achieve. And I'm just saying to you now, because the only way to deal with the content of that motion is, once again, to launch an investigation, right, into it, into what was actually said. And considering that this meeting's already gone, we're into six hours and twenty minutes and people would like to finish this meeting, I do not deem it urgent. Thank, thank you, thank you councillor Carnib, you do not have the, you do not have the call. Can you please respect the point, respect the code of meeting practice and show decorum in this meeting? Thank you.
Or in respect of the, the investigation, you asked me about, you know, what I was intending and what we could do about this. We could take a, I don't know, ninety-second recess and I could play it to you over the recess. That would, would that not be a sufficient inspection, investigation? We can play it, we can hear it, we can see it.
Yep.
It's taken all of ninety seconds.
Yep, so that's a potential option. So then, once again, it's urgent, why?
Because it can't possibly be dealt, dealt with at the next meeting. A point of order was attempted to be moved at this meeting. It's still the same meeting at which, in which the comments and the gesture was made.
And I'm sorry, what does Audica mean? I've never heard that term before.
Audica Australia.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a, a, a hearing, a hearing impaired organisation. Yeah, A U D, I K A. Just Google it. Yeah, yes. It's clearly discriminatory and, and quite frankly, I think it brings counselling into disrepute.
So councillor, I'm happy to, during the break, to go, to have a look back at the tape and to look at the recording that you have about it. So on that. Well, I, in that form, as in noting, I can't note something that I've not heard, noting, but once again, I'm happy to deal with this matter and I give you my commitment that after the break, I will go back and listen to the tape and listen to your recording and then deal with it accordingly. And if that has been said and if it has been offensive, that, and then I'll, I will enact the provisions in the Code of Meeting Practice with regards to the point, that point of order, noting that it's a unique situation, that it's done after the fact. Would you be happy with that?
If I can suggest that we take the recess now to do that?
Oh, you'd like to? Okay, no problems. Happy to call, I'll call a recess now, thank you everyone. I'll come back, we'll come back at seven forty. Thank you.
Apology to councillor Monahan for my comments yesterday. I apologise to him in person during the recess and I wanted to do it publicly as well. I apologise for any offence that I have caused to him or any of the members of the community and I'll make every effort to educate myself on the good work that organisation does.
Thank you councillor Hart. Councillor Monahan, do you accept his apology? Wonderful, thank you. So then procedurally there, um... Do you need to have the urgency motions still?
Yes.
Well, okay, I think point four is the, um... Or two. You cannot technically compel a councillor. Um, but I don't see, once again, I don't see the, um, I don't see the urgency in it. I am happy to have the minutes reflect. If they can, if we can just go up a little bit please. I'm happy to have the minutes reflect effectively. Point one, two. And, uh, and three.
The urgency motion is pressed, the point of order was raised earlier, it was rejected.
So you still like the urgency motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't deem it urgent.
That's fine.
But I'm happy to have the minutes reflect, uh, as I said, those points that you've raised in points one, uh, two, uh, and three. Okay. So, uh, council's now back to committee zero five. Minutes of the governance committee held on twelfth of November twenty five, page three or four, tab twenty seven, recommendation on page three hundred and, um, four.
I'm happy to move as per the recommendations, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor McNamara, second to councillor Harald.
Yeah, I, um, had issues with this one, so that's why I wanted to, um, uh, unpack them. And, and this is a problem with the governance meeting. It, it comes up as minutes, but there's a bunch of items in there that, with different motions that need to be amended because nothing is approved at the governance meeting until it comes here. So I want to unpack some of the items individually. Um...
S- s- sorry councillor, just, just, just on that, so you're, are you speaking for, against?
I'm moving alternate motions.
Alternate motions, right. So just, just, just on that, as you know, council, uh, creates committees and in committees, uh, matters are discussed in depth, I think, uh, uh, for, for hours, uh, I'm with the people in the room. Um, and I, I, I guess the, the adoption of the minutes isn't to go out there and to rehash the, that meeting. Um, because I don't think it's fair to the attendees or the presenters of that, in that meeting.
Well, I'm not going to approve the minutes if I'm not happy with them. I'm not going to approve a motion if I'm not happy with them. So I want to move alternate motions.
Yep. What's your alternate motion? So you're...
Okay, so I have an alternate motion for item one.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll allow the ladies to put on the screen. I have an alternate motion for item three. And I think item four. Let me just have a look here. S- yeah, item four, yep. In the book, it, it looks like whoever's printed it has printed it incorrectly. You've got item five on page three thirteen, then item four on page three fourteen. And item five.
Okay, great. Do you have a second there?
Well, allow...
And that's a, and that's a fo- it's a foreshadowed motion.
Allow people to read it.
Um, councillors, this, this goes into the, this moves into the realm of an urgency motion? Uh, yes, it does, because you're now talking about resolu-
No, it doesn't. I'm, I'm talking-
I haven't finished speaking. Your na- a committee has met for hours with multiple presentations, resolutions were made in that committee. You are now wanting to change effectively all of those quite significantly. Right? And putting them up now without any notice to councillors. So this, as you have put it, uh, is an urgency motion. Um...
Uh, what questions to the mayor if...
Sorry, one sec, I think they've, just one moment. The director of corporate, um, support, if I can through you, through the CEO, through the CEO.
Through, through the CEO, um, these are the minutes of the me- of a committee meeting. Eh, to which the councillor wasn't present. So have, well, so what, it's, it's to adopt the minutes of the meeting.
I don't agree with the resolutions that are in the minutes. So I'm approving something else. What, what's in the minutes I don't agree with.
Sorry councillor, the director has not stopped speaking. Can you please allow, he's can, he's still going.
The point is, it's been presented to council to ad- to adopt the, the recording of the minutes that were dealt with at the governance committee meeting. They are either correct or they are incorrect. If the, if any are incorrect, council can correct them, but can't make up new resolutions other than what's in the minutes.
Yes, you'd, you'd, you'd think so, yes. So, once again, so I go back to my point, this is, uh, uh, an urgency motion, not an alternate version of minutes. So the question at hand here is the minutes in that governance committee.
Governance committee is not a committee of council, so you're saying in here-
Councillor Rostewski, the governance committee-
I'm answering your question.
The governance committee is a-
Allow me to talk-
Is a committee of council.
Well, it needs to be approved by council. So regardless, this is how you do backdoor stuff and it's not going to happen.
Sorry councillor, sorry councillor, I should withdraw that statement, that disparaging statement that you've made against-
I disagree, it's not disparaging.
Alright, councillor-
Because the way these are presented, it's my interpretation of it and I'm entitled to it.
Great, so I deem it as an urgency-
So the governance committee endorsed the draft memorial policy. I don't agree with it. So I'm not going to approve minutes that I don't agree with. And if you want to do it properly, bring it up to a council meeting and make it an agenda item. And I've spoken to on this matter a number of times. It's a backdoor way of putting in stuff without tabling in the agenda.
Sorry, just one, before we go to the point of order, the director of, uh, community and lifestyle, um, through the CEO, if I can refer him.
Thank you, director of community and lifestyle.
Uh, thank you. Through the CEO, our councillor, I can assure you, the, the drafts are put up in the governance committee to allow conversation and input by the councillors. Then we go out to public exhibition, but I can assure you will come back to this council, as in a full council meeting, once it's endorsed with a public exhibition period, with the feedback and, and the like. So you'll have an opportunity to resolve in a way that you see fit, but it isn't a, um, a backdoor way. It's an opportunity for the council to contribute. Uh, we can bring a draft policy to the council in the first instance, however, it doesn't allow for that dialogue. So we do it at governance to allow that dialogue and then bring it back to the full council for endorsement.
I'm very happy with that reply, thank you. That's actually probably the best reply I've had all evening. I agree with that one, so I'm happy to withdraw item four, the draft memorials policy, because that's a very personal one for me, to be honest with you. But having a look at the other ones, I'm happy to move them as a notice of motion next, next council meeting. I don't care. I will deal with it one way or another, whether it's today or the next council meeting. The governance meeting is not going to usurp this forum.
Okay, so councillor, if we can just go back up please, just to, can we, so can we just scroll up? All right. Okay, great. So we're here to approve the minutes. This is, uh, an alternate, uh, motion, not a different set of minutes. So if you'd like to move this, you can move this as an urgency motion for consideration.
I will move it as notice of motions next council meeting, so be prepared for that.
So are you withdrawing it? Are you, sorry, councillor Rostewski, are you withdrawing this? Now, I need to make, I need to, is this an-
Uh, my questions to the mayor, um, would you rule it as urgent so that we could deal with it tonight rather than waiting for the next council meeting?
I'm waiting to work out whether this is councillor Rostewski. When moving the minutes of a committee meeting, this, what is now numerous points, um, if you'd like to move it as urgency motion, because it is not an alternate set of minutes.
I, I, I think that might be resolved with an answer to the, to the question.
I do not deem this as urgent if it's going to be put out there. Hmm? So can you put your microphone on please?
Yes, urgent.
And why is it urgent?
Go up to the, uh, first one, item, uh, one, I think, if you go right up to the top. Okay, so what I'm saying in that, we're going to go ahead and try and do all these, uh... If you have a look at it, what my motion says, we haven't secured any funding and we haven't secured any backlog.
My question is, why is it urgent that it cannot be dealt with on the tenth of December council meeting?
Because we're doing things that are not realistic and-
That, that doesn't indicate your urgency, I'll ask you again.
Well, it is urgent in my, in my opinion. We need to pause any embellishment projects until we work out what my motion, we need reports to come back. Stop continuing spending money on non-essential CBD embellishment projects. The owners of the property in the CBD, I was at the last meeting, they're not happy with what's going on. And the report says they are happy. They're not. I was there, I was the only councillor there. I'm meeting up with them next week. They hate what's happening. So it's urgent, yes.
Okay, um, I don't agree with, that it's an urgency motion. So can we now go back, that the motion moved by councillor McNamara and councillor Harald, that we moved to accept the recommendation to be adopted? Councillor McNamara, would you like to speak anything for?
No, thank you. I was at the meeting and I was participating and I'm very happy that the minutes reflect what happened.
Okay.
Can I speak against it?
Yes, you can speak against it.
Sorry.
Yes, I was at the meeting and I concur that the minutes reflect the matters discussed at the meeting.
Right, so you're speaking for it, great. Councillor, can we start over now? Councillor Rostewski speaking against.
Oh, okay, have I started? Yep.
Yep.
So the governance meeting, just because someone was there doesn't mean that you get to assert what happens here. I was at the last property owners' meeting.
Yes, can we just pause the, pause the, yes councillor McNamara?
It's been stated a, a, a few times now that the governance committee is not a way to usurp a council meeting. The governance committee is not a way to usurp a council meeting. That is a statement, that's not what happens at the governance committee. And I think the imputation that it's being on repeat is that there is something untoward about a governance committee meeting and that's not the case.
Just the, you ref- which, um, what are you referring to? Is it under fifteen? So I think, what's, is that under fifteen point one zero F? I would say imputes a proper motive on favorable person reflects upon any other person, council official, council president, except by motion, pretty much under that basis. Uh, councillor Rostewski, I have to, um-
Sorry, okay.
Um... Um, councillor Silver, I uphold the point of order, um, on the basis that, uh, the, the, the way that it's uh, being, being reflect, the way that you're communicating it and its reflection, uh, because all of these are under a charter that was approved by this council. Um, so can I please ask you to remove, to withdraw?
I'll withdraw that.
Thank you.
So from a ratepayers perspective-
Start the clock again please.
In relation to item one in the governance committee, beautification of George Street, Liverpool, great idea, but the report reads like a glossy brochure rather than honest financial assessment. Residents are staring at potholes, illegal dumping, needles in parks, broken footpaths, collapsing curbs, lack of parking. And we're preparing a ten-year vision with granite paving, bluestone curbs, designer street furniture, cycle ways that cost up to fifty million dollars. The biggest issue in that, in that report in item one is it outlines that the project has a price tag of forty five to fifty million with no identified funding, no timeline and no explanation on how council will manage the inevitable cost of these blowouts. We've already seen this pattern with recent capital works, the pool. The report also fails to address that the city development fund has no available money because previous councils have used it to bankroll the Macquarie Mall upgrades. Ratepayers are now stuck paying for that for years. There's no honesty, absolutely no honesty in my opinion about the financial burden. Liverpool City Centre contribution plan shows around twenty seven million dollars in contributions on paper, but the report confirms that council can only realistically access fifteen million dollars for George and Macquarie Street combined. That's nowhere near enough to deliver a project of fifty million dollars. There's a gap and it's massive. So ratepayers that are reading this, ask a simple question. Why is council prioritising a gold-plated CBD makeover while ignoring the basic services that residents rely on every single day? I'll move on now to the other one, item three, which is, what's the point of order? I've got my time.
The point of order, we've got funding for this project from, it's a state-funded project.
Sorry, continue councillor Moon, so your point of order is what?
That we have funding, so that's not correct. Of course, I was at the meeting, just like.
So.
Where should we?
Sorry, point of order, not a matter of debate, so what you're saying is councillor Restevsky is misrepresenting? Okay councillor, the. Councillors, we are not going to get very far if this is the way that councillors want to go about it. So if we can just be mindful that we do proper representations. I think councillor Amun will, I'll allow councillor Restevsky to continue on this, but because councillor Restevsky, if he can maybe probably reflect in more detail, someone who wasn't at the community meeting, maybe just reflect a little bit more in detail on.
It's in the report.
The accuracy of things.
Fine, is it starting again?
Yep, go for it.
Okay. Now the item five, we've got knowledge-based support for the community. Now, looking at that one and my alternative motions, now I've raised over a thousand councillor requests and I can tell you what residents of Liverpool care about is getting fast answers. They care about knowing why their road has not been fixed, they care about knowing why overdevelopment is happening on their street. They care about simple things that every strong council should deliver. A system is great if it delivers real outcomes. Ratepayers do not want another shiny tool. They want service, they want transparency, they want consistency, they want straight answers. For years, residents have told me they get different answers depending on who they ask. One person says one thing, another says the opposite. This system, in the book, claims to fix that, great, but we need proof, we need the data, we need the results. My alternate motion that was put on the screen turns this system into something that actually works for the people who pay the bills. Quarterly reports, response times, the top issues that residents are raising. How is council going to fix these issues? We can't hide behind processes, we can't have inconsistent messaging, we can't be fishing through different systems. Most of all, we should explore letting residents have access to verified information themselves. So they don't have to wait for the bureaucracy. Give them the facts, give them the clarity, give them the straight truth from the source. Thank you.
Any other speakers for or against? Councillor AJ?
Yeah, through the chair to the CEO, just wanted to clarify something, that are all councillors invited to the governance meeting? And if yes, after the decisions are made on governance meeting, do we serve the councillors that were non-attendant of the papers that were discussed before we have a council meeting?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Yes and yes.
Is there a recording of the meeting?
My interpretation, sorry councillor AJ, was that do we share the results of the governance meeting to all councils, irrespective of whether they have attended the meeting or not, the answer is yes.
So this is, it's not a surprise, so there's nothing behind closed doors. Everybody gets to know what is decided on governance meeting. But I'll also make a point, I know that we are all busy, but we are elected to represent the local people in Liverpool. So let's make time to attend governance meetings and all other subsequent meetings so that we all be on the same page, thank you.
Thank you, any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against a declarate carried. So now we have confidential matters to deal with. So the, if there's any need to go into confidential session, if not, we should be endeavouring to do as many, much of it in the open. So we got to buy councils, like I said, if you are going to ask questions and do feel uncomfortable, that would, then we'll move into, go into closed session. So the first item is conf zero one.
Got an alternate motion?
Just one moment. Just before you, so. Book four, page number five, recommendation on page number six. Yeah, sorry councillor, in moving your motion, does it require us to go into confidential? No, okay, great, go for it. What's your motion councillor? Sorry councillor, this is what we just did. This report is because of this. Is that reflected in here?
Page, page six, paragraph one.
Council engage registered value trying to take a re-evaluation of the easement compensation.
Yes, thank you, sorry, I just referred to the Director of Corporate Services.
Through the CEO, yes, this report came to council meeting two meetings ago, where the council asked that we go back, we were going to charge an easement, a change in the size of the easement based on a prorata basis and get X dollars. And council instructed that we go back and get a valuation. We went back and got a valuation, that valuation's come in at the amount that it is, that you see in front of you now, which is something less than we had two months ago. And we have, we have since imposed the cost of the valuation some onto the applicant. So they've had this additional cost as well.
Sorry, I've got some questions, but I cannot ask them in open session.
Just wondering where the valuation is.
Based upon that response, on page. Page six.
Page six.
Councillors, I'd like to move that we move into confidential session to deal with matters contained in the agenda, and my request is under section ten A two C. I've log come in app because it contains information that would, if disclosed, confer commercial advantage on a person with whom council is conducting or propose to conduct business with in relation to this particular matter. I think there may be a need to go into other confidential matters.
Are we talking about confidential item one?
One, yes. A seconder to that? Let me go in, second councillor Amun, any discussion? I'll put the motion all in favour, against a declarate carried. So can I please ask those who are in the gallery, thank you, we do have to move in the closed session to deal with this matter. For those online, thank you.
And in reading it, is it reading or displaying displaying it?
I thought it was reading onto the record what the resolution was, that's the way it's normally done.
I just can't say the amount, can I? Because I remember there's a sanitized version.
If if the amount is in the resolution, it is read, but normally we refer to the content of the.
Yes.
Sorry, let me just go.
Yep, I get you. So are we back and open? All right, sorry, officially moved, that we move in a second, that we move into open, Council McNaught, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. All right, so thank you everyone, whilst we're in closed session, the council council move that one approves the granting of an easement to drain water over lot twenty one in DP. One, double zero, double zero seven two ninety three Box Road, Corot Hume Highway, Kasul on terms outlined in the confidential report. Two, keeps confidential, keeps this report confidential pursuant to the provision of the section ten eight two C of the Law Government Act nineteen ninety three. As this information would if this clause confer commercial venture on a person with whom council is conducting or propose to conduct businesses. Business, three approves the transfer of the compensation amount into the general property reserve. And four authorizes it's delicate also to issue any document under power of attorney necessary to give effect to this decision on being put, the motion was carried. Okay, conf zero two, page twenty two, recommendation on page number twenty three.
I'm happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor, do you have a second, sir? Second councillor Harrell, any discussion?
I'd like to speak against the motion.
Yes councillor.
We can get this report, it raises some very serious concerns about public safety and council transparency. We've got some buildings here identified with some major fire and safety failures. Now residents would be shocked to learn that buildings in Liverpool still have non-compliant hydrants, sprinklers, exit routes, hose reels. Fire compartments, penetrations that compromise fire resistance. Now these are, in fact, fundamental items that saves lives. Now council was only alerted because fire and rescue New South Wales stepped in. Now ratepayers expect council to detect these risks early. They would reasonably ask why these issues were not identified through routine audits or compliance checks that we do. There's no detail on how long these buildings have been non-compliant. Residents deserve to know how long people have been walking into unsafe buildings. If owners have neglected their obligations for years, there has to be consequences in this motion, I can't see any consequences. There's no explanation of enforcement or penalties. A fire safety order is only the start. The report does not tell residents what penalties apply if owners ignore the order or fail to act quickly. In my opinion, this report downplays the seriousness of exit routes, fire hydrants, sprinklers. Fire separation are not minor technical issues, they're critical protections that decide whether people escape a fire. There's been no communication plan for the affected occupants. Now residents expect council to notify tenants, workers, visitors who may be inside these safe unsafe buildings. Now, in the report that I'm looking at, council claims no financial impact, now that in my opinion that's misleading. Non-compliant fire systems increase risk, which increases liability exposure for council. Residents expect the truth and I want to propose an alternate foreshadowed motion.
Yes councillor, what's your foreshadowed motion? Do you have a second, sir?
Can you allow people to read it?
Do you have a second, sir?
I'm at point six A.
Do you have a second, sir?
For the purposes of debate, I'm happy to second it.
Yep, right, second councillor Monaghan, right, no worries, so we have a foreshadowed motion. I think the director of planning and compliance, the CEO. On the, yep, yeah, on the motion, no, I think the director wanted to.
Thank you, through the mayor, director of planning and compliance.
Through the CEO, I did have some points, but I'll just focus on this. The insinuation that the non-compliance has been for years is not factually correct. This particular example, I know there are properties in here that were made compliant, sometimes a non-compliance does occur from year to year. But just on this proposed motion, the only issue I would have.
Sorry, we're not, we're not debating this, this is the foreshadowed motion, so it's just.
Sorry, just on the foreshadowed motion.
But we can't talk about the foreshadowed motion until we get to the CEO to it, but if you just, if you want to refer to councillor Restefsky's comments. What he said during his, or clarify anything.
Just that the defects will not necessarily be representative of years, it could be very recent. And post our last obligatory inspection.
Great, thank you, can we just go back up to the motion please? Yeah, councillor, would you like to speak for your motion?
I would, thank you, we routinely do get these reports and I'm very familiar with reading through them and. I'm happy with the, sorry, the recommendations that have been made by the experts who undertake these reports.
Great, any other speakers? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare the motion carried. Next item is conf zero three, page forty, with recommendation on page forty one.
I'm happy to move as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor McNaught, second councillor Harrell.
I have some questions.
Yep, so councillor McNaught, would you like to speak for your motion?
I would, thank you, we've been quite a while going through this new committee and getting expressions of interest through. And I'm pleased to see the names of the people who have been awarded a position on that committee. And it was very well considered by the staff who have put this report together. I note that there will be continued liaison with members of the community to get their input as well. The traditional custodians and knowledge holders, so I really appreciate that being included, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Restefsky?
No, I'm fine.
Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it carried. Next item is conf zero four, page forty seven, recommendation on page number forty eight. Yes councillor McNaught?
Happy to move as per the recommendation.
Move councillor McNaught, we have a second, second councillor Moon.
Questions?
Councillor McNaught, would you like to speak for your motion?
Thank you, thank you for the staff who put the report together, I've read through and it's quite comprehensive, thank you.
Thank you, any other speakers for or against? You indicate a councillor Restefsky questions?
Mentions here, the compensation wasn't paid at the time that the land was transferred in twenty one, any particular reason?
Your question is to.
Through the CEO.
Thank you, through the mayor, to the director of corporate services.
I'm sorry, we on report four?
Page forty seven, four, yes.
I don't understand the question.
I've actually given you the wrong item number, withdraw that, when I get to, I'll ask it.
Okay, any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it carried. Next item is conf zero five, page fifty two, recommendation on page fifty three, councillor McNaught.
Happy to move as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor McNaught, second councillor Hart, is there any discussion? Would you like to speak for your motion councillor?
Again, thank you for the report, it's been well considered and I'm happy to support.
Thank you, any other speakers? Now, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it carried. Next item is conf zero six, page fifty six, recommendation on page number fifty seven, councillor McNaught.
Happy to move as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor McNaught, we have a second, second councillor AJ, is any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, declare it carried. Next item is conf zero seven, page sixty one, with recommendation on page sixty two, councillor McNaught.
Happy to move as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McNaught, second councillor Hart, any discussions?
Just a quick question, through the mayor, the CEO there.
Councillor McNaught, would you like to speak for your motion? Yes councillor Hart, said through the CEO.
There are three properties in this meeting that are being acquired. What are going to happen to those properties, is it going to be demolished like in the near future?
Yeah, thanks, through the mayor, look, they're road widening, future proofing projects, unless, so that's, that's the near future. There are wide widening, road widening, future proofing routes. To what extent they will present, I'll pass it over to the director of corporate service.
Through the CEO, that is correct, but you'll notice, note on page sixty one that they're being acquired on behalf of the Department of Planning and Environment. We're just the acquisition authority, so depending on when their timing of works, the properties will be demolished, yes.
Just through the CEO, the, I know we've purchased significant amount of properties in recent times, and then we knocked down the dwellings, but yet then the property just sits there. Denying council of income and obviously natural surveillance. Do we need to resolve that the properties don't get knocked, the dwellings on the properties don't get knocked down and get leased out until the time that they will be used for the purposes acquired?
I think a general resolution to that regard would be unhelpful and the reason is a lot of the properties that are acquired are not of a quality that we could rent as a landlord even in the interim. So the liability attached to an asset, a lot of the assets are deteriorating and to bring those things like electrical wiring up to spec that would allow us to even allow the current, say the seller and the owner of the property to stay on our terms would be cost prohibitive to that process and particularly in the areas we're talking about, a lot of these houses are fifty, sixty, seventy years old.
Thank you, any other discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next item is conf eight. Conf eight, page sixty six.
Happy to move as per the recommendation.
Second councillor Harrell, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next item is conf nine, page seventy three, recommendation on page seventy three, move councillor Hart. Seconded councillor McNaught, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. Next item is conf ten. Same booklet, page ninety four. Yep.
Happy to move the recommendation, Mr Mayor.
Move councillor McNaught, second councillor Enamun, any discussion?
Yeah, I got some questions.
Do you want to speak for your motion councillor McNaught?
No, just again, I'm appreciative of the, of the consensus report, thank you.
Yes councillor Restefsky, questions?
Yes. Will the redevelopment reduce, maintain or increase the number of public car spaces?
The, the resolution to start this process was about increasing the total number of parking spaces in CBD by five hundred. That is the resolution that was passed in February two thousand and twenty two.
Next question, will council retain ownership of the car parks or will they be sold or leased to developers?
Your question is to CEO.
I guess, thank you for the question, through the, through the mayor, a lot of that will do, be determined by the commercial opportunity that's presented to us. At the moment, the issue is about increasing car spots and getting the best value for money for ratepayers, so right at the moment. All we've really done is, there's five companies who've expressed their interest in giving us a proposal, which must come to council. The terms of the bespoke commercial arrangements as to those proposals, I would expect would differ. Obviously, they're interested in revenues and all the things that car parks, come with car parks, but so are we. And I think those, those good decisions are exactly fall into the exact same bucket as the councillors generally intend to have discussions in relation to assets that are not great. The commercial results should be primary in our response to the proponents if and when they present their ideas to us.
What guarantees exist that developers will actually deliver the public parking?
Let's call the contract through the mayor.
Have we valued the land to understand what the sites are truly worth before negotiating?
Yes, we have done valuations in relation to the EOI. The great news about valuation is the market will determine, in this EOI, the actual market will determine a higher value based on the proponents' proposed activities and commercial arrangements, so the land value is less important to us now because we're not selling the land, we're looking for opportunities for best value for money, so it actually creates an enhanced market position because they're in competition to give us the best value for that.
Just want to move an alternative motion?
Yes councillor.
It'll be on the screen shortly.
I think two and seven negate each other. Seven negates two. And three. Yep, but I'll refer to the CEO. But before that, sorry, is there a second for the motion?
Happy to second if I might suggest to the mover that two and three be removed because seven, yeah.
Now, there is a question with regards to five. Because you're making an assumption what's built into the RFT documentation and that they're not transparency and safeguard measures. Well, I refer to the CEO and I.
Yeah, the actual, through the mayor, so the safeguard measures were just erased via the removal of those, but in the end, understand one. The RFT will be publicly released, the purpose of the project is done in the specification. How public parking will be protected is not only done in the resolution but done in the specification and the requirement. How the council land will be safeguarded, well, maybe you don't want it safeguarded, maybe you want to sell it. I'd leave that up to the commercial options provided by the five proponents. Independent financial impact assessment, absolutely, that's part of the RFQ response by the panel. But ultimately, ultimately, that financial impact assessment will be a matter for council because it'll be presented if, if there are options for sale or otherwise. Community consultations are non-negotiable, must do it after the RFT comes in, we're in the early stages of course. And we don't want to defer because there's, there's essentially the commercial windows and these kind of opportunities, the market wants some certainty from councillors and council as to the market conditions. If they're going to price this, and we've, we've seen that ourselves, haven't we, in escalation of price on capital works? If they're pricing it for an RFT, they want some certainty from council that the proposals will be met within a certain period, so deferral.
Sorry, sorry, CEO, the, my apologies, probably incorrectly started the discussion regarding this as the foreshadowed motion. More wanted kept to the actual, I guess, the legalities into that. So, but if we can just go back onto the first, the motion that's before us. As moved by councillor McDonald, second by councillor Moon, councillor McNaught, would you like to speak for your motion?
No, I think it's, well, as much as to say thank you for the report and I'm happy to support it as it is.
Yeah, are they out of the, any other speakers for or against?
Against.
Yes councillor Restefsky?
These car parks belong to the ratepayers, so they're not just a piece of land, they're a vital public asset that support local businesses.
Can we get the clock up please? Yeah, sorry councillor.
Local workers, families who rely on access parking in the CBD, which we have a major problem with at the moment. Now this report tells us that six developers have expressed the interest in redeveloping somewhere in the CBD, which I won't mention, five have been shortlisted, but the community has not been told what these proposals contain. There's no guarantees on parking, no detail on ownership, no clarity on public benefit and no protection for ratepayers. and no protection for ratepayers. Residents want transparency. They want to know whether we'll lose public parking. They want to know whether we're able to hand over a prime public land without any clear returns. They want to know how this development will reduce congestion, support local businesses and improve the CBD, or make it worse. So before council takes the next step, we must ensure that these projects del- deliver real benefits for the people who pay the bills. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moon, speak for or against?
I'd like to speak for. I believe in the original motion that was put. I believe that in the original motion that was put, there was a quantity of five hundred extra car spaces for the local residents and local businesses to use. So therefore, we are looking after the best interest of business in Bathurst Street. We are looking after residents of Liverpool and ratepayers. So therefore, I believe this motion to be a good motion and a good investment for Liverpool residents. Thank you.
Any other speakers? No? Okay, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it carried. Um, so councillors, we're now up to, uh, confidential eleven. Um, now, the, just before the, uh, councillor McNaught, you see your hand. Uh, just before that, the, because of the, we, we are aware of what's in these reports. Uh, the declarations, uh, will, um, should be made in closed session, um, in these reports.
Before we even attempt to deal with this or any part of this code of conduct matter, there's a ser- serious legal issue that must be addressed.
Okay.
You've got, we spoke about it briefly and the legal council here conferred that certain councillors have to leave this chamber. Now, I can still see them in this chamber, they can't participate in any debate.
Councillor Rusevsky, I just made a statement saying that the declarations, because of the nature of this, should be done in closed session and whatever those declarations are and actions will be, uh, will be visible at that point. Councillor McNaught?
I'd like to move that we move into closed session, Mr Mayor.
Under section?
Under section, um, ten A to G and I of the Local Government Act because it contains advice concerning litigation or advice that would otherwise be privileged from production in legal proceedings on the grounds of legal professional privilege and alleged compass, contraventions of any code of conduct requirements applicable under section four, four, zero.
Do you have a seconder? Seconded councillor.
Why is my microphone, um, being switched off?
Hasn't been.
Um, councillor, councillor McNaught has a conflict. She cannot move that motion. Uh, she has a conflict and should not be present. Should, either should you or either should Hart. Move out of the room, then we can move on.
Yep, so.
Move out of the room and then we can move on.
Okay, so councillor Sevsky.
We're not going to go into private until you get out of that chair and allow Peter Hall to sit in that chair. We're not. No one's leaving the room.
Yep. Uh, so councillor, the, the question of leaving the room as you just described relates to the declarations of interest.
No, it doesn't. You leave the room now, leave your declaration of issues on the table. This is not John O'Jarker. We're not playing that game.
Thank you, councillor Sevsky.
No, 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 no. You've had your, you've had your little shenanigans. It's not gonna.
Um, so there's been a motion by councillor McNaught, seconded by councillor AJ, that we move into closed session uh, for item conf eleven. Um, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare. Okay, we, we do that again, yep. Um, just before, uh, just before we, uh, by all means. So you want to speak, sorry. Councillor McNaught, would you like to speak for your motion?
I would. Um, in the interest of time, it was discussed last night, but as referred to, as, as referred by the general counsel last night, uh, when you are considering code of conduct procedures, you must be in closed session according to the code of conduct procedures. And that's why I have put forward that we move into closed session as per the code of conduct procedures.
Thank you. Councillor, uh, Monahan, you want to speak for or against?
Against.
Against going to closed session.
I thought I made that clear.
I'm just confirming, yep.
Yes.
Go for it.
When the clock's brought up. Thank you. Um, so consideration of the final investigation report by council procedures for the administration of the model, uh, code of uh, procedures for the administration of the model code of meeting practice, which is replicated, um, under the procedures that we follow, seven point four, seven. The council is to close its meeting to the public to consider the final investigation report in cases where it is permitted to do so under section ten, capital A of Local Government Act. Um, under ten, capital A of Local Government Act, council may go into closed session for a number of those reasons. My question's to the CEO, given the wording of seven point four, seven, is it the case that council must close its meeting to consider this report? If the time can be paused.
Yeah, through the mayor, I'll refer to the general counsel for advice on that.
I missed the question, I'm sorry.
Um, can I, do you want me to refer it to the CEO or can I just address? Thank you. Um, seven point four, seven of the, um, uh, procedures for the administration of the model code of meeting practice read that council, the council is to close its meeting to the public to consider the final investigation report in cases where it is permitted to do so under section ten, capital A of the act. Um, I accept that this is a case where council is permitted to close as much of the session as, is required to deal with the matter. Uh, but ten, capital A of the act is, uh, says that council may go into closed session. Is it the case that council must go into closed session?
I believe so, councillor. I gave that advice yesterday. By virtue of section ten A of the act, council is permitted to go into closed session for the, uh, on the basis of the two paragraphs which are cited in the report. I think we then have the procedures which we are obliged to follow by different section of the act, uh, which say that we are to go into closed where we are permitted to do so. It's slightly tortured language, but I think it is a requirement.
Okay, thank you. That, that's the clarification I was after, because you're right, the, the, the language is tortured. It's council is to close its meeting where it's permitted to do so under a section that confers a discretionary right to do so. Um, that, that's the clarification I was seeking. Look, I'm still generally opposed to the principle of dealing with uh, matters in closed session if we can deal as, de- deal with as much of them as possible in open session. But noting, um, the advice, uh, that we've received and I have to agree with it. That was my, um, having read seven point four, seven, um, in more detail, um, today after last night. I have to agree that despite the tortured language, that's probably the correct interpretation. Um, so I'll conclude speaking on that note.
I want to speak against going to the close.
Yes, councillor.
Start my clock. So you're being asked to decide whether to push this into confidential. Well, I have an opposing argument. The law does not require you to hide this matter behind closed doors. The law sets a default position. Council meetings are open to the public, they are recorded, they're on webcast. Ratepayers have a right to see how their elected representatives deal with an issue of public importance. Section ten of the Local Government Act makes it absolutely clear. It says members of the public are entitled to attend council meetings. That's the rule, that's the starting point. Section ten A sets out of limited circumstances where a meeting may be closed. It does not say must be closed. It does not say code of conduct matters automatically go into secret session. It gives you a power, not a command. The Office of Local Government own guidelines reinforce this. They say that even if a matter is, fits into one of the categories in section ten A, the council is under no obligation to close the meeting. The guidelines also say something very important. The council can only close the meeting if keeping it open would be contrary to the public interest. You need to be satisfied that the public interest demands secrecy. The test isn't met here. This matter involves a conduct of an elected councillor, me. I want it in open session, me. It involves how this council handles complaints. It involves how public resources have been used. Every part of this is squarely in the public interest. There's nothing commercially sensitive here. There is nothing involving vulnerable residents. There's nothing involving police operations or public safety. The only thing that might be risky is an embarrassment to certain councillors. But the law is very clear, embarrassment is not a reason to lock out the public. The O L G guidelines specifically state that an embarrassment to councillors or staff is irrelevant to the public interest test. I'm the subject of this complaint. I am waiving any privacy concerns relating to me. I want this matter heard in open session. I want it on the record. I want the public to see. I want it on webcast. I want it transparent. I want my solicitors to be able to watch it live. I want no mystery, no sneaky deals, no off convenient, off camera conversations, no confusion about who said what. Every councillor who believes in accountability should welcome full sunlight, not fear it. Is that right? Yes. So you point to clause eight point four, five of the code of meeting procedures. That clause says that council is to close the meeting to consider a final investigation report where it's permitted to do so under section ten A. The key phrase here, where it is permitted. You are only permitted to close the meeting if the public interest test is satisfied. It's not satisfied. You do not have that permission. When the act does not give you permission, clause eight point four, five does not apply. This council has already faced serious criticism in recent years for how code of conduct matters have been handled. The Supreme Court has quashed censures based on bias and procedural unfairness. In Dalley versus City of Parramatta, the court made it very clear that councils must follow the law and must ensure fairness. A transparent hearing protects this council and protects the ratepayer because transparency is the greatest safeguard against any legal error. If councillors tonight force this into confidential without satisfying the public interest test, you are exposing the council to a challenge. You are exposing ratepayers to potential costs. You are setting the council up for the same mistake that other councils have already been caught out for. And you are doing it against the clear wording of the act and the O L G guidelines. I want to make one more point. Ratepayers are watching this council very closely. They expect honestly, they expect courage. They expect fairness and they expect every councillor to own their votes. Tonight isn't about protecting me. Tonight is about whether this council holds, hides from their transparency or stands up for it. Whether we believe in o- open democracy or secret meetings. Whether we trust the people who elected us or we shut the door on them. If this is a tiny part of the report that generally, if there is a part of the report that refers confidentially, for example, a complainant's name, it's been retracted. I've seen the report. No one's getting named here, except me. That's what the law expects. That's what the community expects. That is what good governance demands. So as a result, it doesn't need to go into closed session.
Could I ask for an extension of time if councillor Rusevsky, um, wishes to continue?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. Uh, you're asking for an extension of time?
Correct.
Under what procedure of the code of conduct, of the code of meeting practice are you referring to, to do that?
Thank you. So can I speak?
Uh, councillor Monahan is, I'm waiting for him to move an extension as per the code of meeting practice. Sorry, yeah, I, I need to know under what section he's referring to.
You should know.
That's actually exactly what I was gonna say. Um.
You profess.
You're the chairing, you're chairing the meeting.
Sorry, excuse me, Mr Angelovick, there's, uh, there's no commentary from the crowd, thank you. Under what provision, councillor?
Do you, do you, do you know which provision of the?
I'm asking you, you moved it.
You're the chair of the meeting.
I'm, and I'm asking you to which provision you're referring to. Does that provision exist? Do you know?
Yes, it does.
Then which one is it?
No, no, I'm asking, as the chair of the meeting, do you know which provision it is?
You, you yesterday stated that you can chair this meeting better than I.
I stand by that statement every day of the week.
And you said you know the code of meeting practice better than I. So I'm asking you, indulge me with your significant experience and knowledge.
Um, I, I, again, I, I think I offered this yesterday. I'm happy we can swap. And then you wouldn't need to ask me.
With, without me, without.
Be able to tell you.
Without moving a proper resolution as per the code of meet, uh, code of meeting practice, um, then your request cannot be considered.
So are you not aware of the provision?
I am asking you which provision is it?
You're chairing the meeting.
Yes, I am. Exactly what I'm doing, because I said yesterday we adopted a brand new one, quite with significant changes into it.
So I take it that you don't know which provision it is. It's four point two C, page nine. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the council. The chairperson may resolve to grant an extension of a maximum of three minutes. I'm asking if you would resolve that way.
Sorry, councillor.
Oh, it's in the public forum, my, my apologies.
Oh.
Hey, I make one mistake in what, twelve months? At least I can count to four. Sign my own name too, I'm, I'm real good.
Because the, the councillor will have an opportunity to speak in the closed session.
Yeah, no, I want to speak now. I'd be a coward.
Sorry, councillor Sevsky, I should withdraw that state, restore that. Councillor Sevsky, you are in breach of the code of meaning palace, uh, uh, policy. Um, that's an act of disorder referring to someone in the manner that you just did, and I ask you to withdraw that.
Do you have your panic button with you?
I ask you to withdraw the statement that you made a moment ago.
Look, if you've got your panic button, you shouldn't be afraid of me speaking.
I've asked, you have made a derogatory statement towards myself.
What did I say?
It is an, I will not repeat it. Everybody here heard it. I will not repeat it.
I can't remember what I said. I called him a coward? Oh, that, I actually called him a coward? Oh, I called him a coward. So what do you want me to do?
Withdraw it.
And then what?
It's an act of disorder, council.
But are you a coward?
All right, councillors, there is no proper motion as moved by councillor Monahan. There's been two speakers against, right? Um, any other speakers for or against going into closed session?
No, we're not going to get into closed session. You've got a conflict.
Would you like your right of reply, councillor McNaught?
Well, you're not going to go into closed session.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands.
McNaught needs to go, Manon.
Against, I declare it carried. Thank you. Thank you. Can we now, division, all those in favour, please stand? Thank you. Those against? Thank you. I declare the motion, uh, carried. Can I please ask those who are in the chamber to please leave? Are we going to closed session?
So I shall read out the uh the motion that was passed, the resolution that is. And the resolution is that one that council one rejects the investigator's recommendations for assentia under section four four zero G of the local government act nineteen ninety three as it considers the conduct to be sufficiently serious to warrant further consideration by the office of local government and to formally censure councillor Westeveski under section four four zero G of the public of the local government act for the code of conduct breaches contained in the attached final investigation report and refers to the matter sorry refers the matter to the office of local government under the misconduct provisions of the local government act and on being put to the meeting the motion moved by councillor McNort and declared carried and foreshadowed and they and the foreshadowed motion moved by councillor Monahan therefore lapsed. Thank you. We move back into closed session. Thank you. Moved by councillor Amun and seconded by councillor AJ. So those that cannot be here kindly leave and councillor Westeveski you have the opportunity of... And councillor Westeveski, you have the opportunity of...
And... Any other councillors still present?
No. Nobody.
No, they're all gone.
Yeah.
So I will... the statement is on the screen. The council resolution is one defer making any... Wrong one. That's all right. Yes, I thought you might say that. Sorry councillor. The decision of council is one rejects the investigation investigator's recommendation for it to censure under section 440G of the Local Government Act of 1993 as it considers the conduct of to be sufficiently serious to warrant further consideration by the Office of Local Government and to formally censure councillor Restewski under section 440G of the Local Government Act for the code of conduct breaches contained in the attached final investigation report and refers the matter to the Office of Local Government under the misconduct provisions of the Local Government Act on being put to the motion... being put to the meeting, the motion moved by councillor Amun was declared carried. There was a division and the votes for are as recorded there. Thank you, and that closes the meeting for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.